To receive a substantial savings by getting in on that bid for dairy, food, produce, bread, point of sale being their system that they utilize their software for being able to track up sales and all of those things, commercial foods and smart systems.
Great.
You'll see that the bids have actually already been awarded and that includes dairy as D F A shingles, food as Gordon Food Services, produce is Piazza, bread is Alpha Bakery, point of sale is Heartland, commercial foods is snack and beverage.
Great, thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the N I E S C Purchasing Cooperative from the Food Service Agreements?
I make a motion to approve the Purchasing Cooperative for Food and Service Agreements.
Second.
You have a motion, second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing non-call roll, please.
Trustee Milletta?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes. Trustee Ramion?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Next, we have the approval to hold the adult meal pricing for the 2025-2026 school year.
Yes, based on the reimbursement rates for the 24-25 school year, Don Kelly and Food Services recommending that to increase the current adult meal prices so they will remain $2.85 for adults for breakfast and $5 for lunch.
Do you have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the adult meal pricing for the next year.
Second. You have a motion, second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say that this is just another example of Mrs. Kelly's hard work and ways to figure out things that could help and I think this is the first time since I've come from the board that it hasn't been an increase. The increase is usually mine, you know, maybe $0.50, but I think this is for, thank you to her staff.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Non-call roll, please.
Trustee Wilkie, yes. Trustee Ramion?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Milletta?
Yes. Next, we have the approval of a change to the 2025-2026 school year calendar.
The recommendation for this change is April Day, but the April Day off that we have in the 25-26 calendar is already scheduled for April 3rd. However, in collaboration with USW, we discussed instead moving April break to always fall on Good Friday, so the calendar is just going to adjust April 3rd, which is currently that day of April break. It will instead be April 17th this year and moving forward, it will always be whatever date Good Friday falls.
Thank you.
I believe it's the opposite, correct? Good Friday is April 3rd and it was originally the 17th? Or am I mistaken?
Yes, you're right.
Okay.
So that's what I noticed.
Yes, you're right.
Yes.
I said it the opposite, but you're right.
Good catch. Do you have a motion to approve the school calendar change for the 2025-2026 school year?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
The motion, second. Any discussion? Non-call roll, please.
Trustee Ramion?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Milletta?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes.
Next, we have the approval for the adjustments to the student parent handbook.
So this is just simply adding the when enrolling, the parents, what they will need to bring, and then also that addition of the chain of command.
Do you have a motion to approve the student parent handbook changes, adjustments?
I make a motion to approve the adjustments to the student parent handbooks.
Second.
The motion, the end, the second. Any discussion?
Question or comment? First, first is, um, thank you for adding that information about chain of command to the elementary. And the other, the next one is a question for proof of residency. There are some cases that families sometimes are waiting for documents if they have moved in a short period of time. Is there a period, such as a couple of weeks or a month, that they are allowed to have a grace period before we have to provide them stuff?
Yes, our, we sent out a 45-day letter. So they're aware when they enroll that they have 45 days and then when that time is approaching and they still are missing documents, they're notified that there might be 15 days left before that 45 days. So we continue to work with those families and we tend to talk with the school officer as well as our school advisors and principals to get that accomplished.
Thank you.
And of course, our secretaries, they play a very significant role in helping us track this down.
Any other questions or comments in regards to the student parent handbook? Hearing non-call roll, please.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Milletta?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes. Trustee Ramion?
Yes.
Next, we have the approval of the credit card resolution, R 12 dash 2025.
So this resolution, oh, Andy.
I'll, I'll read it. It's a short one. Whereas the School Board of Trustees has discussed the policy regarding the use of credit cards, now therefore be it resolved that the credit card listed on Exhibit A attached to this resolution are approved for issuance as indicated on Exhibit A and shall be held by the persons designated therein. The credit cards listed on Exhibit A may only be used for the purposes specified in Exhibit A. Upon completion of the purpose for which the credit card was used, the card shall be returned to the custody of the responsible person. The designated responsible official or city employee should maintain an accounting system or log concerning the use of the credit card held by them. Credit cards shall not be used as a method to bypass the accounting system. Payment for credit card charges shall only be made upon proper submission of supporting documentation for the charges. In any interest or penalty incurred, incurred due to late filing or furnishing documentation by an officer or employee should be, shall be the responsibility of that officer or employee adopted this 23rd day of June 2025. Do you have a motion to approve Resolution R 12 dash 2025?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
The motion, second. Any further discussion or questions?
I just have a question. Is there a limit of the most?
Yes, each of these have a specific limit. I can get those for you. In particular, the resolution coming before you again is because we're adding a card for part of the rate. This is for group purchases such as maintenance, repair items, tools, instructional items where it shortens the delivery time or reduces the cost, but I can make sure to get to those limits.
I just thought I missed a couple. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Non-call roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Milletta?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes. Trustee Ramion?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Next, we have overnight field trips for Portage High School to the Portage High School Cheer Summer Camp, July 8th through the 10th at Purdue West Lafayette. Portage High School Dance Team, July 8th through the 11th at Ball State in Muncie. Girls' Cross Country Camp, August 4th through the 7th to Waukaa, Indiana. The Boys' Cross Country Team Camp in Albion, Indiana. Valley Kickoff Cross Country Meet, August 15th through August 16th at Laverne Gibson State Cross Country Course. Do you have a motion to approve the overnight field trips as read?
I make a motion to approve. Second.
The motion, second. Any discussion?
Just a comment that these students having these experiences during the summer, it's just going to give them another opportunity to work together, be outdoors, and it's just, I just really think it's a valuable experience for them and it's memorable for them as well, so.
Yeah, it's a good bonding opportunity for the students, but it's also, you know, it's a sacrifice by those coaches that take these teams and, you know, that take that time out during the summer months especially to do these camps for the kids too, so compliments to them as well.
I know you talk about having fun.
This is right.
They're probably going to have fun.
Yeah.
No doubt about it.
Absolutely, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Non-call roll, please.
Trustee Milletta?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes. Trustee Ramion?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Next, we have the approval of the Portage Township School Employee Handbook. Some changes there.
There are three changes. The first is on your section 4.1 for salary determination and fringe benefits. This is changing the date from January 1st to July 1st as the anniversary date for hourly rate computations unless it's noted in the collective bargaining agreement. Also, section 4.8 vacation allowance. Our handbook previously stated that you had to be a year-round employee to have calculated time of vacation. Now, you want to make sure that school year, if you go school year to year round, you will also be able to carry over those years. So for instance, if you have five years of service as a school year employee and you move to year round, previously you would not be awarded vacation. Now, you would be awarded the amount of vacation that's in alignment with the handbook because we're just counting all years of service, whether you are a 52 week employee or a school year employee moving forward. Also, under section 4.10, this is the agreement section for extended family to match the new USW contract language that I'll be asking for your application of this meeting. That takes it, I believe, from one day to two days.
All right, good, thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the changes to the Portage Township School Employee Handbook?
Make a motion to approve the PTS Employee Handbook changes.
Second.
The motion, a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing non-call roll, please.
Trustee Wilkie, yes. Trustee Ramion?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Milletta?
Yes. Next, we have the approval of contract for subject.com.
Subject.com is a platform we're using not only for our case virtual academy, but we also utilize it for credit recovering, acceleration of students in need of having a conditional opportunities once they've already mastered content, flexible learning opportunities for our middle schoolers and high schoolers possibly needing less than traditional setting. So the multi-year agreement comes from our continued efforts to research this and see who had utilized it in the past. Tim, who is our instructional tech director, had utilized this in the past and has received great results from it with working with students and families. And we piloted it at the high school this year with our tribe students and they absolutely enjoyed it. We're using it in summer school as well currently. So the multi-year agreement allows us to capitalize on some of that cost savings. So for three years, that costs us $150,150.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the contract for subject.com?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
The motion, a second. Any discussion?
I did a little searching on that particular, like, subject.com and I was looking at different areas. One of the areas that we have a component is the multimedia component. And so there were different individuals that were commenting on the effectiveness of it and they talked about 46% increase in student engagement and there are several languages that are included and so I just thought that that was really, I mean, I saw nothing with positive answers, but I just, that caught my attention.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Non-call roll, please.
Trustee Ramion?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Milletta?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes.
Okay, next up, we've got several contract service agreements or subscriptions. First off, for curriculum and IT, we've got Bell Technologies for an Adobe Creative Cloud Software License for the 2025-2026 school year at a cost of $12,300 from the Education Fund. For curriculum, for Amplify, DIBO's Literacy Software License for the 2025-2026 school year at a cost of $19,305 from the Formative Assessment Grant for the Business Office for Boyce Systems, CompuTrol ECA Software License from August 1st, 2025 through July 31st, 2026 for $4,690 out of the Operations Fund. For curriculum tech integration, for Class Link Analytics Platform Software License for the 2025-2026 school year at a cost of $1,812.50 out of the Education Fund. For curriculum tech integration, we've got Magic School Instructional Support Software License, August 1st, 2025 through July 31st, 2026, $30,150 out of the Digital Learning Grant. For curriculum and IT, we have Bell Technology, Microsoft 365 EDU Software License, August 1st through July 31st, 2026, at a cost of $77,843.50 out of the Education Fund. For curriculum, Excel Learning Platform Software License, July 21st, 2025 through July 21st, 2026, cost of $113,850 from the Education Fund. Another one for curriculum and IT, Securely Student Internet Safety Software License, August 1st through, 2025 through July 31st, 2026, cost of $94,720 out of the Education Fund. For curriculum, IT, we've got Simple Discipline Student Referral System Software License, July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, at a cost of $11,142 out of the Education Fund. And lastly, for transportation, we've got Tyler Tech Ride 360 Driver Software License, April 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025, at a cost of $62,272.19 and that's out of the Operations Fund. Anything you would like to add to any of these, Dr. Allenis?
I think it's important to mention a couple of things. So the tools with Microsoft and Adobe, those are specifically for the instructional tools and the suite that that provides our students and then also our teachers be able to make sure they have those industry standards and, you know, they've actually earned a lot of awards for their high skills that they are able to obtain in those classes, so we're grateful for that. The DIBO software is for basic early literacy skills. It also is what we utilize for our dyslexia screener and we are required to have a dyslexia screener every year. CompuTrol, of course, that's just obviously making certain that we have the proper software for our extracurricular financials for this upcoming school year. Class Link, that's a great opportunity for us to have digital resources that are clearly identified and based on each user's specific needs so that we're not having kids, for instance, in kindergarten, searching through all these apps that don't apply to them because it might be a high school app such as the Adobe. Our teachers were very, very vocal about wanting to have iXL back and so we did change that from our previous platform because they really feel the tool works best for them. So this, we are going to also be moving NWVA as our formative assessment and we will be using the real-time diagnostic for iXL. Of course, the safety licensing software, this has been something we've done for a lot of years and this is device monitoring while our kids are on their one-to-one device at home and in school. It allows classroom management, safety alerts, different things, enabling early intervention when there are situations that arise. So of course, a very important piece of what we're doing to make sure we're accountable for those devices and what students are doing on them. Simple Discipline was piloted by the high school very successfully this year and that will expand to all of our secondary schools next year. And then, of course, being able to communicate with families for transportation and the driver software. So we've made some adjustments. We've removed some things. We recognize these are all very costly items, but they really do get down to the high achievement needs of our students, the safety and security of our students, and the ability to be efficient.
So Attorney Allen, have you had an opportunity to review these contracts?
The ones that I need to review. You guys have set certain policies, so if they're under that amount, I don't.
Great, thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the contract service agreements as read?
Make a motion to approve all these contracts, if you're, so, so.
Second.
You have a motion, you have a second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing non-call roll, please.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Milletta?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes. Trustee Ramion?
Yes.
Next, we have the approval of the TRBO Net Dispatch, Dispatch System Agreement.
So this is for the dispatch software and the licensing of 460 radios. The agreement amount is for $89,825. I want to share specifically that this allows dispatch to directly occur with the repeater network rather than having to rely on traditional mobile radios to initiate communication, which can sometimes have a lot of variables to include the loss of signals when that is transmitted. So this will integrate seamlessly with our district ride emergency alert system. Danielle Tate and our Transportation Department and Matt Melton in IT have been working diligently to get this exciting opportunity that will help our drivers communicate well back within the compound and not lose.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the TRBO Net Dispatch System?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
The motion, a second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing non-call roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Milletta?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes. Trustee Ramion?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And finally, the best thing on our agenda tonight, we have the recommendation to approve the USW Support Staff, Food Service, and Custodial Agreements. Dr. Allenis, would you like to discuss?
Yes, so our USW groups, three of the four are, they have ratified their union contracts for custodial and service and support staff on Friday, June 20th. These agreements were then brought forth to the board for your consideration this evening. I'm recommending that we, that you consider the approval of those three contracts and I'd like to share a few of the highlights. For custodial, new overtime language for when accidents occur, increased temporary supervisor additional pay from $1 an hour to $2 an hour. Vacation carried over from five days to 10 days, but never having more than 30 vacation days at a time. And that PTO may be taken into our increments when we have individuals who maybe have a doctor's appointment at the end of the day rather than taking a half day, they'd like to come work three quarters of their shift, so we'll allow that to occur. Food service, there is now a uniform allowance increase to $100 and that is for their non-slip shoes that are provided, additional laptops provided during specified times to complete assigned online training and new summer school and summer heating job. job posting requirements. The support staff will have a stipend increase for when asked to sub for a teacher from, it was twenty dollars a half day and forty dollars a full day, it's now twenty-five dollars for a half day and fifty dollars for a full day. There's new seniority language for choosing subs, first choice to assistant signed to the classroom. So if I'm absent and my assistant is in the room, they would have the first opportunity to sub because, of course, those students are most directly, they have a great relationship, and that assistant knows what's going on regularly in that room. A one hundred dollar stipend for weather gear for support staff that are assigned to recess, arrival and dismissal, and language for school advisors to be able to lock these workdays or require to use PTO days on the implement weather and new learning days. And again, although I'm just bringing you the three contracts for your consideration, I have to just state that overall negotiations has been extremely positive. Our relationship is very strong, and although we do have a few more kinks to work out with transportation, we'll get back to the table and get that accomplished. But having three of the four done is a great accomplishment, and I would appreciate the consideration for those.
Thank you. And before we move, I know there's some representatives. Does anybody else want to address anything with the contracts, or you're all good? Okay, good, thank you. But would you have a motion to approve the USW Support Staff Food Service and Custodial Agreements?
Make a motion to approve the USW Support Staff Food Service and Custodial Agreements.
Second.
The motion, a second. Any discussion?
I would just like to say that without these groups, we cannot function. Our children would not be able to get the education that they need. It takes, you know, we talk about families, it takes the village. Well, it takes, it takes the village to make a school district work, and we appreciate everything that you do on a daily basis. And I'm happy that this has been a good referral and we look forward to it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I think we'll all ditto that. I mean, it's, yeah, we're very appreciative of everything you do, and you're an integral part of the school system. And we also appreciate the good faith bargaining that you guys always do with, with our administration on our behalf, and we appreciate everything you do. And with that, I think we'll be happy to ratify this. Did we do the motion in a second yet?
Yes.
Will you call roll please?
Yes. Trustee Milletta?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes. Trustee Ramion?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Congratulations. Okay, next we'll move on to our superintendent reports. Dr. Allenes, any updates for us?
Yeah, so a few things. Celebrating some trio excellence with our partnership with BMW that Dr. Disney oversees now. We have Talia Noils from Portage High School was honored as a twenty twenty-five Outstanding Trio High School student. She is a very dedicated student who has a lot of leadership skills and truly is a role model as her academic achievement is proven as such. We also have a shout out to Nicholas Rivera from Bayley for being named the twenty twenty-five Rising Star Trio Student. He has shown exceptional involvement in the leadership program and is making a lasting impact on his peers. I also want to congratulate Portage High School and Bayley Middle School, who have earned National STEM Distinction for Project Lead Weight Programs. Also, Bayley Middle School Advanced Band, they competed at Six Flags Grade America, as did Willow Creek. Bayley's Advanced Band faced off against seven other ensembles. They earned first place in their category and also achieved the highest score of any middle school band across all divisions. Our Willow Creek Music Program also had an outstanding showing. Choir was first place and best overall middle school score. Band was first place and orchestra was second place. I just also want to mention the Department of Justice, Matt Melton has been working to submit a grant on our behalf for the replacement of our camera system, just more advanced technology for approximately three hundred cameras. And we worked closely with Portage Police Department, Chief Candiano, Mayor Bonta, as well as Officer Ortiz, one of our SROs, wrote letters of support, and we really appreciate that. It's truly a partnership to make sure our safety and security is top-notch. I had the pleasure along with the administrative team today to attend a conference on Jimmy Cassis, who talks about cultureize and recalibrate, and it's about district and building leadership and taking the opportunity to reflect on your own, your own leadership and knowing that anything that's occurring, that you have only the ability to change yourself and through modeling and making certain that you are following the path of core values, that you can truly make a significant impact in the district. So it applies to all organizations, business world, but it was specific to schools today, and we studied that with him, with all superintendents and their leadership teams across our state of the United States. It was great. Also, just to be a reminder out there, when you click on our school website, you'll instantly get a couple of those pop-up bars, one of them being enrollment for twenty-five, twenty-six, if they're a new student or a returning student. Also, the traditional option, the virtual option for high school, our kindergarten, first grade open enrollment, and our preschool opportunities. So I just encourage people to keep taking advantage of that, get those enrollment forms completed. Summer meals continue to take place. There is the weekly Wednesday pickup at Haven Hollow where you get seven breakfasts and seven lunches for children under eighteen. And that does not have to be a PTS student. That could be from any community or private school, it doesn't matter. We're just being kids. Also, Ailesworth, Portage High School, Boys' and Girls Club in Portage, and South Haven, they are serving daily. So you can visit our website for times, but again, that weekly meal pickup is only on Wednesdays at Haven Hollow, but anyone could participate in that as well. I really want to thank our USW groups working very closely with charity, and her team has been really refreshing, working closely with them since January in particular, so I'm grateful for their efforts. I want to encourage them to relax and recharge, those who are school year employees, and for those who are year round, just encourage them to stay cool, keep up the good work. And again, it was a great, successful year. I look forward to what's to come, and I look forward to, like I said, getting back to the table to make sure we can recognize our transportation as well.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Allenes, or any other comments from the board? Did we receive any public comment forms?
We did. Frank Hobert, general comment form.
Mr. Hobert, yeah. Well, we don't have a podium, so just you can...
I made a mistake last time.
Why don't you just stand right over here? I think the camera could be...
I'll make sure I make the internet. I am just finished up my one point six, sixth, seventh year here at Portage, part of faculty, part of the football coaching staff. And my wife, Marsha Hobart, who's been here for many, many years, is a Portage lifer, and she's also a good friend of former Portage football coach Les Klein's daughter. And they had a girls, you know, three, four days away for a while, a couple of weeks ago, and apparently Coach Klein's in his eighties. And I'm not from Portage originally. I went to school a little bit west of here, east of here, Michigan City, Elston, if I'm dating myself, and had an opportunity to play against Portage teams twice. And tough, fair, you knew you're in for a battle, and he won a state title here, I believe it was nineteen seventy-seven. And it crossed my mind that you really have a football field, and it just says, "Go Big Red." I know that we're preserving the opportunity for stadium naming rights. Could it be, I don't know, First Source Bank Stadium, but could we possibly consider naming it Les Klein Field? It's almost storybook. Week two is our home opener. We're facing the Hobert Bricky's, longtime nemesis, longtime rival. We can make a connection between the present football program and the future of the football program, along with making a connection to its historic past, and making a connection and drawing in Indians from the past and bring huge home crowd, excite the community. I mean, it could be something that, you know, Hollywood, right, makes movies about this stuff. And I just want to bring that up. I reached out to Brett Saint Germain and said, "Hey, look, I don't want to go over your, be over your head on this." He said, "Please take it up with the board if I had a time." And I made a point to make it here tonight, so that's what I want to throw out to you.
Great, thank you. It's ironic, because a week ago, I sent a message to Dr. Allenes that while many of us know Coach very well, that while he's still alive, it would mean an awful lot to him to name that Les Klein Field. You know, we kind of got away from the days when we used to call it the Warpath, in your right. So I would be all in favor of that opportunity to recognize Coach Klein for his accomplishments, our only state championship in football in our history, and hope there's more to come. But I think it would be a great honor for him, and it would mean a lot to all of us who went to Portage High School while Coach Klein was there. And it also, I think, you know, we need to constantly, we started doing that in some other areas, recognize those pioneers and those who contributed to our school system over the years, and start recognizing them. And it means an awful lot more to them while they're still with us than it does when they're not.
So spoiler alert for the July meeting. We're reaching out to Coach Klein and Coach Caspin's families to see if they can be present because there will be an opportunity for the board consideration to name Klein Field as well as Caspin Fields here with the baseball. So we'll keep you informed with that.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing that to us. Any other comments or questions from anybody from the board? If not, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.